You're ready.
Okay. This is Bill Lyman, Chairman of the Stonehenge Zoning Board of Appeals, calling this meeting to order at 7:00 PM. This is a special meeting on July 14, 2020, a virtual meeting with virtual public hearings. I will start with a roll call of who's here. In addition to myself, I believe we have James Kating. Are you there?
Here.
Unmute yourself, Jim.
I did. Can you hear me?
Okay, we do now. Yep, got it. Jeff Walker?
Here.
Okay. Mark Mitsko?
Here, yes, I am.
Okay. I'm assuming there's no sign of Ray Dussel.
Correct.
And we know Nat Trumbo's going to not be here. So, James Stanton, are you here? Okay, I guess he's not. And...
He is here. He must be muted.
Okay.
Good here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you. Okay. And you're an alternate. It looks like we won't be meeting your seat because we only need one alternate. We had a term last time. So Diana Boersma, our new member, Diana, you're here?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Could you speak again, Diana? Your connection was a little bit garbled. I'm seeing you speak, but I'm not hearing words. Would anyone else here, Diana?
Oh, I hear nothing.
Neither did I.
Man, I don't know. Are you on mute? Unmute?
Now I've been unmuted. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, now I can hear you. Okay. So the first thing I'm going to do is appoint an alternate. And since regular Ray Dussel is absent, I'm going to appoint Diana Boersma. An alternate will be seated for Ray Dussel this evening. With that, a couple of housekeeping things before we get the public hearing started. Jeff, would you read the notice of the public hearing?
Yes, I will. For the Governor's Executive Order 71, due to the COVID-19 outbreak, the notice of the virtual public hearing was posted on the town of Stonehenge's website on Thursday, July 2, 2020, which was not more than 15 or less than 10 days prior to the hearing.
Thank you. I will remind everyone that it takes four votes of this five-person board to grant a variance. In order for a variance to be granted, the applicant must prove a hardship. After the conclusion of tonight's public hearing, this board has 65 days to render a decision. Any decision made by the board can be appealed to the Superior Court within 15 days of the effective date. As we go through the public hearing, first we will hear from the applicant, then all those in favor of the application, followed by those in opposition. Then if anyone has a general comment, they will be heard. And then the applicant has a right for rebuttal. However, if any new points are raised during the rebuttal, the public has the right to respond. I'll remind all persons wishing to speak to identify yourselves, identify your name and address when the time comes that I ask for that. Okay. I think with that, I think we're ready to start the first public hearing, which we'll read here. The first public hearing we're going to hear tonight is ZBA 20-06. Aaron Castillo and Sidney Davis, Patrick Davis' representative, seeking a variance from GR 5.1.1 to reduce a rear yard setback from 40 feet to 31 feet to construct the deck. The property is located at Five Vars Avenue, Parkett, Cessers Map 11, Block 4, Lot 8A, and the zone is RA 20. With that, Mr. Davis, I believe you are here. You have the mic and tell us about your application and hardship.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lyman. My daughter and her fiance purchased Five Vars Avenue at the beginning, earlier this year. And during the planning process for that property or for the deck was when we first became aware that the setback requirement of 40 feet couldn't be held with the addition of a 12-foot-deep deck on the backside of their house. And after reading through the regulations and so forth, from a hardship standpoint, I included this in my application, our opinion is that the rear yard setback required for this particular lot prevents both Sidney and Aaron from making reasonable use of their property. And one of the things that I noticed also, if their lot size of 10,400 square feet places this lot in District RA-20, which drives that rear yard setback requirement of 40 feet. And if the lot was 10,000 square feet or just 400 square feet smaller, it would be placed in zoning District RA-10, which would provide much more relief. In fact, 10% of a lot depth. So if the lot were just 400 square feet smaller, their rear yard setback requirement would be 4 feet instead of the 40 feet currently required in the current zoning District RA-20. So that's the hardship that's being, that I'd like to communicate. And asking for relief be granted because I don't believe there'll be any substantial detriment to the public good.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to tell us about the situation? Want to tell us a little bit about the deck that's planned?
Sure. The deck, the deck plan is going to be, will not go past either of the side walls of the house. The overall dimensions for the deck are 16 feet long along the long dimension of the house and then 12 feet deep. So that rear, as it goes out into the rear yard, the deck is planned to be 12 feet deep. It's planned that there will be one set of stairs with approximately four risers. So the deck is going to be about three to four feet off the ground. And those stairs will run parallel to the house and not extend into the rear yard. So the total depth from their back door to the edge, outermost edge in the rear yard is going to be 12 feet. So that's that dimension. And so if this variance is granted, we would wind up with a 31-foot dimension from the edge of the deck to the rear of their property. Not sure if you want more detail than that, but we've got the building materials identified. So essentially a composite decking and rail systems with a pressure-treated structure to support it.
Yeah, I see we've got a sketch. Remind all the commissioners in the staff report, there's a page there that shows the layout of the lot, the house, the proposed deck, the rear yard setback, as well as the dimensions. A little bit about the proposed deck. Mr. Davis, could you describe the backyard a little bit more? Like what the setback from the rear, what does the rear part of beyond your property look like, your neighbor's property?
My daughter and my future son-in-law are sitting here with me, and they say it's woods, that it's woods behind them. And I'm looking for my map of the adjacent properties. But at least as they stand in their backyard and look, you know, past their property, all they see is trees and shrubs. And there's an existing fence that's there that I'm not sure if that's on their property or not. But it looks like they backed up to Lot 1. And I've been there, my wife and I have been there several times. And you can't see any houses from their property as you're looking out of their back door.
Yeah. It looked like a pretty wooded area there, immediate neighborhood.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Before I invite the commissioners, any questions? Did you have anything else you'd like to tell us about it?
No, thank you.
Okay. I'll go down, again, I'll go down the list. Jim Kating, do you have any question?
No, I mean, it all looks pretty straightforward. So no questions for me.
Okay. Jeff?
Yes. If we were to grant this variance, would you or your daughter, is it your daughter, I guess, stipulate that this space would not be enclosed ever?
We could do that. I'm not sure how to do that, but we could certainly...
All you have to say is, yes, you agree with what I just said.
Oh, then yes, I agree with that.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Mark?
I'd be very much in favor of this application. It's a pretty minor thing to deal with here.
Okay. Well, if there's no other questions, then I'll ask...
I had a question.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Totally didn't get down my list of you. Go ahead.
All right. So you mentioned a staircase. So the deck is going to be above ground?
Yes.
Up on the second floor? Is... I may have been misreading the quotations that you made from zoning law, but it looks like you could create a patio around without requiring kind of a variance.
You're breaking up a little bit. But I think I heard you say that, and I think it was a comment or a question, could a patio be installed by a deck? And a patio could certainly be installed. A deck is preferred. The house is about 1,000 square feet, and there's very limited storage area. And by doing this, that'll create a little bit of storage space for lawn mower and trash can and so forth and other items underneath the deck. But yes, to answer your question directly, a patio could certainly be installed. But a deck is what's preferred.
Is that it, Diana? Okay. I'm not sure. Again, I'm still having trouble understanding your, I don't know whether your microphone, this is a way you can, willing to make it any clearer, but it sounded like others were struggling a bit as well. Okay. Well, we'll continue.
Okay. The only thing I can think of clear would be to turn off which my...
I think that's, it sounded a little bit better, the last few words you spoke. Okay. Well, we'll continue on with the, the next question is, is there anyone here or anyone that's on board that would like to speak in favor of this application? And I would make note, again, I think, remind the commissioners, there was one letter, one neighbor on 6 Clarence Avenue, which is not immediately adjacent, but close by, wrote a letter in favor of the application.
Great. Thank you.
Hearing no one else, I would ask, is there anyone out there who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Hearing none, is there anyone who would like to make a general comment about this application? Okay. Again, hearing none. I think we had all the questions answered, Mr. Davis. So unless you have a final word for us, I will close the public hearing.
No, just to thank you for your time. And I appreciate everyone's willingness to do this virtually, given the circumstances. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. I'll declare this, the public hearing from ZBA 20-6 closed. And I will entertain a motion from one of our commissioners.
This is Jeff Walker, and I would like to make a motion to approve this application because the lot is undersized for the zone by almost half the required square footage due to the variance approved in 1972. Also, approval variance would not adversely affect the public health, safety, welfare, and value of the surrounding properties. And the third point is that the applicant has agreed to not enclose the space with screens and roofs and so forth.
This is Jim Kating. I'll second that motion.
Okay. We have a motion made and seconded. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
No.
Okay. How about you, Jim?
No, I have nothing.
Any, is there any other commissioner who would like to make the... Mark?
I would like to make one comment. And that is that we've been presented with this type of situation before. And the reality of it is, if the applicant made a masonry patio, whatever you want to call it, terrace, whatever, the exact same size as this deck or even actually larger, they wouldn't need a variance at all. So the only difference is what the deck or the patio is constructed of. And in this situation, a deck is a lot more user-friendly. And so it makes sense what they're proposing to do here. But the reality is, if they denied the variance, they could do the same exact thing out of masonry in the same size, the same railing, same steps and everything with no variance. So it would still be there in the same configuration. So the point I'm making is, this is a very minor request, in my estimation.
Okay. Diana, do you have any comment?
Fairly new here, but I guess the, you know, for the zoning law to have some sort of meaning, there has to be a standard for where to variance. And the way I would... Not used for property without the variance. And while it's certainly more convenient and in the absence of, you know, other ranches, I can certainly see wanting or preferring that above... Or that meets the standard of no reasonable use for the property. Only point that I have here. This is a very minor request. And, you know, I drove by the property, and I really don't know if I'd be able to note the deck configuration plan.
Okay. I'm sorry. I have to apologize. I really couldn't understand what you're saying. I hope that is the, I'm going to ask the recorder. Is the recorder able to understand Diana enough to get good notes?
Courtney, Mr. Lyman's talking to you.
Okay. Yeah. I can understand her enough to get what she's saying.
Okay. Good. Was that it?
Do I make one comment? This is Mark Mitsko.
Sure.
I couldn't understand a word she said.
Yeah, I guess that's very difficult not to be able to hear the discussion. The, are you able to...
Turn it up and try dialing in again.
Yeah. Just dial it on a phone, a regular phone line? We don't need video. It's more important that we hear you.
Bill, is it possible she's on speakerphone?
I don't know what, I don't know what she's on. I'm not able to understand even that.
From where she's calling, for whatever reason, she doesn't have enough bandwidth. But she's hung up and is calling in on a landline.
I heard a beep beep, but I don't, Diana, are you there?
No one new came up.
Does the landline numbers require any kind of a password or any ID?
You just dial the numbers instead of the joint meeting on the invitation that's sent to you.
Perhaps we could, this is Jeff. Perhaps we could seat one of the alternates if they're still on. Did you hear that, Bill?
I did. And I just would like to, I hear you. James Stanton, you've heard this whole discussion, correct?
Yes.
All right. I think you're not getting her, Candy, yet?
No, I'm not getting her. But perhaps the appropriate thing to do would be to just simply continue this application, open up another, other one, and come back to this when Diana's back online. And in the meantime, seat the next alternate in place of Ray Dussel for the next application.
Okay. So continue this one, and then we can come back to it and get her, if she's back on.
Yes. It's unfortunate for Mr. Davis, but, oh, wait. We just got somebody come in. Hold on. Call her in.
Hi, this is Diana.
There we go.
Can you, can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. What I was saying was to, yeah, to repeat what I said earlier. I clearly understand why the property owner would prefer to have a deck that is raised up. And I drove by the property, and, you know, I believe that no one will be able to see the deck from the road. I don't know whether they can from the back, but it is fairly heavily wooded, at least at this point. But I thought that the statutory standard for whether or not to grant a variance was whether the property owner could make reasonable use of the property or could not make reasonable use of the property without the variance. And clearly, the property owner can make reasonable use of the property. It just depends on whether the staircase goes from the back door down to a patio or from a deck down to the backyard.
Okay. So it sounds like you're not in favor of this application?
Regretfully, no.
Okay. All right. I hear you. I would add in the discussion that I think the, what I always look for in these applications is hardship created by the zoning regs and the specific property in the case. And in this case, for reasons not associated with these current owners, way back when this property was developed, this lot, for unknown reasons, was chosen to be made half the size of the RA 20 lots. If it had been made the normal RA 120, RA 20 size, there would be no need for this application. So it is kind of constrained by being a half-size lot in a zone which is intended to be twice that size. So, and because it is not in an area where it will impact anyone around it, it looked to me like it was all wooded in the back as well. And there were no objections, and I intend to support this application. So what I'll do is ask, I guess we've all had something to say. Is there anyone who would like to add another comment before we take a vote?
Yes. I'd like...
Jim, you want to talk?
Jeff? You're going to, go ahead, Mark.
The same thing I had mentioned before. I mean, whether they make this deck out of wood or they make a masonry patio three feet high, which is allowed by all of town zoning and building standards, the same deck is going to still sit there in the same configuration. I don't see any issue here whatsoever.
Okay. Was there anyone else who had a final comment?
Yes. Jim Stanton here.
Jim, I'm not sure, I'm not sure you can comment during the discussion. You could raise questions because you're not seated. You could raise questions during the public hearing, but I'm not sure you can participate in the discussion. Is that correct, Candy?
That's correct.
Okay. I didn't realize that I wasn't the fifth person. So I'll keep my comments to myself then.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Then I think we're ready for a vote. I'll go down the list again. Uh, go down the list again, uh, Jim Cady?
Well, before you do, before you do, there's a motion, I think, I don't think it's been seconded, right?
Yeah, there was, it was seconded by, um,
Okay, good, sorry.
Jim, Jim seconded it, who made the motion, Jim seconded it.
Sorry, Jim.
Can I say approve? Yes. Jeff?
Approve.
Mark?
Approve.
Diana?
Uh, not approved.
All right, and my vote is approved. So, the, uh, we have four, uh, approved, uh, one not approved, so the, um, so the variance is, uh, approved. Okay, Mr. Davies, um, you still on?
I am, yep.
Okay, so you're, you're all set, uh, with that, uh, you can drop off, or you're welcome to listen in, uh, any more, but we're, uh, your, your, your application has been approved.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, um, okay, I'll go, move to the, uh, the, the next, uh, do we have, uh, representatives here for the next application?
Yes, I see Rusty Sargent's on board.
Okay. All right, so the next application is ZB 2007, and Cam, uh, Richard Bromley, Daryl Deon, and Old Stonington Road LLC, Russell Sargent, uh, the agent, uh, seeking a variance from ZR 5.2.1 to reduce front yard setback from 40 feet to 20 feet on Old Stonington Road on two lots being merged or constructed mixed-use building. The properties are located on 2638 Old Stonington Road, assesses map 153, block two, lots three and two, zone, uh, GC 860. Okay, um, Mr. Sargent, is it pronounced Sergeant or Sergeant?
My grandfather changed it, it used to be Sergeant.
Okay.
You can call me Rusty, I got a NASCAR name.
Okay, all right, Rusty, all right, you're, the, the mic is yours.
All right, very good, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, this, I'm, I've worked in this area a couple times, uh, this is the Old Stonington Road area, I have a map, I, I hope you can all see the aerial photograph. Um, this is sort of the poor stepchild of the GC 60 zones. Uh, GC 60 in many towns is what was called a highway commercial zone, so the, um, you know, the commercial activities there have the benefit of having highway access. What happened is Route 1 was cut to the south of this area, the site that I'm working with is, um, it is outlined in red right here. And you can see, uh, the train tracks cut southeast from the left corner to Latimer Point Road. Now, previously, Latimer Point Road continued all the way up to Old Stonington Road, okay? And this, this particular little zone, you know, is comprised of what's five now, it will be four properties. The Dog Watch Restaurant, um, to the left of our parcel, across the street is the former Wilcox Marine Building, which is now Mystic Coastal Flooring. We've just recently, uh, received, uh, had a zoning amendment which allowed us to put apartments in that, uh, building, which are pending, the sear moratorium amending are about ready to end. We still have the Skipper's Dock, most recently, I think it was Tongue and Groove, uh, restaurant facility, sort of falling apart and dilapidating. On the existing parcel my client owns, I'm actually working for the Densmore Oil Company, Old Stonington Road LLC, uh, Densmore Oil has a, uh, terminal here with a oil storage building and then a garage for their trucks, and then further to the east is the Quambog Fire Station. If we look here, you can get a, a, a better sense, there's a very low area with tidal, uh, wetlands in this area, pretty much encroaching onto the, uh, restaurant property, which then becomes a cove and then goes out to Wilcox Cove and out to Fisher's Island Sound. So basically, what we have right now is the, um, oil terminal taking up half of the original lot, and then an additional lot, which Densmore's previously, previously owned, uh, where there is a Christmas shop, which they are purchasing and look, looking to put a mixed-use, uh, office, uh, two-family, uh, building in this location. Uh, when it started, uh, when they started negotiations to purchase this property, the EPA had requirements that oil terminals of this type had onsite supervision, and that's why they commenced, uh, with purchasing it and looking to build an office there presently at One Water Street in Mystic. And the, this is, you know, a pretty desirable site within this zone, and that is the highest location, elevation's about 14, the road is 10, you know, goes down to two in the wetlands. So it's a, you know, quite a desirable, uh, building site to work on. Now, as I go back to the history, the, let me just jump around here, and in 1959, um, Old Stonington Road, which was Route 1, is at the, uh, at the top of this plan, and that Wilcox, or the Latimer Point Road, as you can see, used to continue across all the way out to Old Stonington Road. When they took 150 feet out, which is this, these lines here, this is now the south boundary of the property I'm dealing with, it's 150-foot right-of-way, so now Latimer Point Road exits onto Route 1 somewhere in this location. But they essentially made a very long and very shallow site, okay? The, and the reason that's important is, we're on two streets here, okay? So we have to do the front yard setbacks for each street. Now, this was in 1959, the roadway didn't get cut and built, we think, until about 1969. Uh, this map show is a 1960, I guess this is a 1969 map, at which point the roadway had not been, slide that up, the roadway was not in this map, uh, as, at that point, but, and the oil terminal buildings were not there. The fire station was over to the right here, and the Cove Fishery, that you might remember, was in this location. The Christmas shop was here. Now, in a, this, at the time that this, um, this happened, the zone, this is the 1966 zoning map. In the area we're talking about, this, slide it over a bit, this way we go, this is Latimer Point, and at the time this zoning map was done, the Latimer Point Road went all the way to Old Stonington Road, the new Okay, again, do I approve that? Yeah.
I'm asking to annotate it, you know?
That's great, the site we're talking about is essentially there. Now, at that, we thought it was commercial and I, and Brian's, you know, sent me this information yesterday. Oh, can I get rid of that Candy? How do I get rid of that? Is it Candy?
Yeah, I'm here, I'm not the one annotating though.
I know, I wanna stop annotating.
Let's see, I think you have to go to the top and, uh, hit stop, you have a little orange pull-down bar when you move your cursor to the top of the screen?
Got it.
Okay.
Oh, that disappeared. At the, you know, we thought it was the commercial zone, the front yard at that point was 30 feet, also it was 30 feet for the RA 4 zone, where our property that I previously designated was located. And they also had a stipulation at the bottom here, that all, you know, required front yard depth shall be in substantially built-up areas, can be reduced to meet the existing setbacks. The reason I bring this up was, at the point that, uh, they, the Densmore's purchased this property, the property is roughly 100 feet deep, if I go back to this drawing, it's 105, it goes to about 107 here. So if you take two 30-foot front yards, one from each side, that still leaves you roughly 40 feet to build within. Sometime later, the, the Planning and Zoning Commission did a number of things, including eliminating the, uh, housing as an allowable use essentially, and they increased the front yards to 40 feet. And when they did that, they reduced the amount of buildable area on the site we're dealing with to 20 feet. One of the other things that I wanted to point out, if I can open it, was in the 2018, and it hasn't gotten any, it wasn't any better previously, they don't recognize this particular scenario with roads on both sides. If you look at these four diagrams, essentially you have a corner lot with two street lines, a street line with, you know, rectangular or fairly, you know, simple with two sides and a rear, and then a flag lot, and then a more oddly shaped lot. They don't show the particular configuration that we have here, which makes it unique, would be my argument. Now, this is the configuration of our parcel right now, and if you go through each of the buildings on this street, on this side of the street, presently, the, to the east, the Quambog Fire Station is about 12.3 feet from Old Stonington Road, and essentially abuts the property line on the Route 1 side. The Dog Watch adjacent is roughly 20 feet from the street, and, you know, less than 40 on the, on the other side here. The two Densmore buildings, and I can show you the next drawing, are definitely closer to Old Stonington Road and Route 1 than the 40 feet required. Now, if I go to this drawing, this is essentially the crux of our, our, um, proposal right now. To the right, you can see the two, the oil storage building, as well as the garage facility. Quambog Fire Station is off to the right of the screen, and the Dog Watch Restaurant is off to the left. Now, the 40-foot setbacks from each of the roadways, here's the 40-foot setback from the Route 1 right-of-way, and here's the 40-foot setback from Old Stonington Road. You can see the present, Densmore buildings are within that setback, the Dog Watch to the left is about 20 feet, so it's about half the required setback, and the Quambog Fire Station was about 12 feet. What, what we're proposing to do is go back to what the, what was allowed in 1966, when the Densmore's purchased this property, and say, well, look, we need about 40 feet to get a commercial building in this location. Um, we've, you know, we've shown the required amount of parking, buffering on both sides to the neighbors on either side, well, this is not really a neighbor, but, you know, we wanna create a, you know, a pleasant environment atmosphere, uh, for a commercial building with apartments above it. Now, last night, we met with the Architectural Review Board, design, with the EDRB, and we showed them this building, and the intent is, you can see to the upper left, this is still a very, fairly narrow building, you know, in an office building, you know, it's fine, it's a fine footprint for apartments, you have, you know, living space to the right with, uh, you know, porches in each of the corners, and then bedrooms on the backside. It's a little bit tight for office space, I believe in the package you got, I showed the floor plans, it's, you know, they're, they're, you know, they're okay, they're not terrific. Having to cut the, the size of this building almost in half would make it almost, you know, would make it very awkward. We'd have to go from a 34-foot by 82-foot building to a 20-foot by 140-foot building. Now, one of the things when we talked to the Architectural Design Review Board was, you know, we're trying to create a building, you know, reflects the architectural heritage and what's going on in town, and that's their mission. And they, uh, in, in our discussions, in addition to the, looking at lighting and the form of the building and landscaping and that sort of thing, they felt, uh, that in order to strictly comply with the, the zoning requirements, it would be awkward and we couldn't get a, you know, a building with appropriate site design, building articulation and massing, uh, according to the zoning requirements. Um, and so that's, you know, in a sense, the, you know, the other properties on that street average about 14 and a half feet from the Old Stonington Road frontage, we're looking to go 20 feet, you know, less than
Okay, Rusty, uh, this is Candy Palmer, I just wanna make a point of order for the, uh, board. Uh, this memorandum is, uh, exhibit number two, for the record.
Okay.
That's it.
Great. Now, one of the things in looking, I know you've received a letter from Peter Gardner, who is in, uh, not really in a butter, but he lives on the south side of Route 1, some distance from this property, and he wrote, um, as a former practicing attorney, a, a letter, which I don't believe is legitimate, in that he is making legal representations and analysis without being an attorney. But, I'm not gonna, you know, question that, I brought it up with staff, and they said to, uh, rebut his letter as best I could. Now, one of the important things, uh, and he actually gives me almost an outline of, you know, how to proceed, is to look at the comprehensive plan of development and, and, and issuing a variance to determine whether this would be in, uh, out of
Rusty, can I, can I inter, in, in, interrupt you a minute?
Sure.
You're starting to break up a little bit, I don't know whether
Uh-oh.
You're doing different, um, but you, you've been very clear up to this point, but you've started to get, uh, broken up a little bit.
All right, make sure, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, good, well, let me, I can get rid of this, actually. Um, I just wanted to go through some of the, um, aspects of the coastal, I mean, excuse me, of the Plan of Conservation and Development. The objective is to protect, grow, provide, make things happen. Now, what they have trying, one of the things they're trying to promote is low-impact commercial and residential approaches in sites that are underdeveloped. And this is, as I said before, this is sort of the poor stepchild of the, uh, GC 60 zones. This and the Camp Ground, uh, Camp Ground Road, uh, GC 60 up off of 184 are the only two that are really aren't on, um, you know, arterial highways, either state or federal highways. And one of the objectives is, as I was saying, is to, you know, to, to take existing underdeveloped areas in commercial zones and to try to see that they can be built out to a greater potential to increase the tax base and to create more density so that, you know, more, more activity can occur. Uh, they promote mixed land uses, which, until I did a zoning amendment about, oh, I don't know, about a year and a half ago, to allow, um, limited residential use within the commercial zones. And at that point, in Plan of Conservation and Development, they specifically stated that as an objective, as something to look, to look for as a, um, a future planning objective. And in that same Plan of Conservation and Development, they look at a range of housing opportunities, but they also say, yeah, we have to maintain, you know, a certain amount of commercial activity, there's a ratio that has to be achieved. And, you know, we believe that what we're doing here is in, you know, really pretty much in lockstep with what that objective is. Now, one of the other things, one of several other things that they look at are coastal resources, and we've submitted a coastal site plan review, which I'm not sure how much we need to go through that, but I'm more than happy to discuss it. And there's a couple of things, one is, uh, preserving, uh, coastal resources, and to the east of this property, uh, there are tidal wetlands. If you look at, you know, that our proposed building site is sort of in this area here, and there is a, um, frontage here, there are tidal wetlands in this area, there's some inland wetlands in this area, we're beyond the, the, um, review area for the tidal wetlands, we're about 290, almost 300 feet from the tidal wetlands. And more importantly, with sea level rise becoming an issue, one of the things they highlight in the, um, um, Plan of Conservation and Development is trying to build outside of areas where there could be flood, where flood impacts would be great. Uh, they had, they targeted one thing, which they called the 24-inch, uh, mean-high water rise as a, sort of a target, and this site, as the highest site around, is completely beyond that. You'll notice here, there is a line that sort of squiggles along here, uh, this is, to the right of this line is a, is a flood zone, which requires building to the elevation and, you know, bringing it into conformity with the flood, flood regs, where we'll be building it completely in what's, what's described as an X zone. So we're beyond, uh, you know, we're, we're, you know, accommodating the objectives of the state policy and the Plan of Conservation and Development of not risking people's lives by putting them in harm's way. Uh, now, one other thing to cite, there is water and sewer, municipal water and sewer here, so that's one other thing they look at in the coastal site plan review process. And, you know, having said that, and I'm going on a lot longer than your previous application, but I think this is slightly more complicated, what I wanted to do is, is just sort of highlight some of the things that Mr. Gardner says in his letter. And, you know, one of them was the Comprehensive Zoning Plan, which is the Plan of Conservation and Development, which I believe I've discussed, and I believe we're, you know, meeting the, you know, the intent of that document. And one of the things that he mentions, and I'm not sure how he, and he cites a number of legal cases, which I'm not sure he's citing correctly, is that the property be unique. And I think if you look at other GC60 zones within the town, you'll find, I don't think you'll find any. I did a quick visual survey, and I couldn't find any that have lots that are this long. What is it? It's 429 feet of frontage and only have 105 feet deep at the, at the maximum amount. Now, in a GC60 zone, you're required to have a minimum 100 lineal feet of frontage on a roadway. To meet, assuming you just took the prototypical lot, it would be 100 feet wide, 600 feet deep. And even if you had roadways on both sides, taking out 80 of the 600 feet, you'd still have 500 feet to build in. Where, this is a 50,000 combined to 50,000 square-foot lot, and the amount of building, buildable area we have here, basically because of the length of the roadways on both sides and the fact that we have to set back 40 feet from both, makes it a very difficult and unique and a very difficult site to, to build on. Okay, I think I hit that. So, my argument is this would be unique in the, in the proportion of the lots, you know, in regard to the, the proportional size of the lots, and unique in that it's not common throughout the GC60 zones throughout the town. Now, I think you probably have all, you know, heard the zoning mantra that, you know, strict financial problems or, you know, situations are not sufficient to allow variance to be granted. Our argument would be that to build a 20-foot-wide commercial building is just not practical. It would have to be 140 feet long to do a two-story building, and we barely have, would have, barely have 140 feet to build in to build out to what our allowable FAR is. Mr. Gardner makes an argument that, well, there's already an existing building here as well as the two oil company buildings, and therefore you should, you know, you shouldn't be able to grant a variance to create a larger building, which I don't believe is the intent of zoning. Zoning sets maximum and minimum standards, and, you know, we go, we're going very close to the maximum FAR here as we are allowed to do. We're reducing a couple of non-conformities. Right now, the over, each of the lots, the 38 and 26 Old Stonington Road are both below the minimum lot size. By combining them, will still be a 50,000, which is less than the required amount, but we are reducing the amount of non-conformity by combining these two lots. The, the building on the, a number of things on, you know, the existing 100-foot-square Christmas shop that are non-conforming, which we would eliminate. One is the driveway width is too narrow, the building is too close to both Old Stonington Road and the eastern boundary here, and the parking isn't anywhere even close to being in conformity. All of those things with the new site plan we're proposing would be remedied. We have the proper, the proper driveway width with throat and parking to present conformity with walkways and a building. And you can see to fit the building in, we have this 20-foot band right here that we could build within, and if we get parking, you know, it's a very awkward site because of its configuration. Okay. Now, there's a question, you know, he brings up the point that hardship could be self-created. I would say there was a regulatory taking here which created this lot, which had, you know, that the owners had no ability to impact at all. That's a Federal Highway Act to take, take this and leave this lot in a configuration where not only is it very narrow, but the required front setbacks on both sides were increased to make it less buildable. Let's see. He makes the argument that if you start making variances, and this is your objective, is to make sure that there are hardships and reasons that a property owner and the town essentially could benefit from making exceptions to your regulation. And he, and he sort of makes the claim that it's just going to unravel the whole process. In my experience, I've done variances a year before, and I've done variances in other towns, many towns, and I think that this is a pretty clear case where there is a hardship. It's very difficult to build here. There's been regulatory action which has made it-
You're breaking up again, Rusty.
Okay. There's been regulatory action which has even make it, made it more difficult. And, you know, I, I, I just think that, you know, we've, you know, made it, you know, it's pretty clear that, you know, one of Mr. Gardner's arguments is we're tripling the size of the building on there. Well, that's the amount of land that the Densmores have been paying taxes on for many years, and we'll be buying another lot to reduce some of the non-conformities and bring it into conformity in everything but for that one front yard, where all the other properties on that frontage, the fire station, the two other Densmore buildings, and the Dog Watch Restaurant, none of those conform, and we're not going to exceed anything. In fact, we're going to be less than all of those. So, that's essentially my case, and I throw it back to you.
Okay, thank you. Very, very thorough discussion. Again, I'll go down the list, ask them for questions, starting with Jim Cady. Do you have any questions of the applicant?
Uh, I don't think, you know, in one place it showed the setback of Old Stonington Road going from 40 feet to 30, but it looks like it's 20 feet. I don't know where I saw that, but it seemed like there's a discrepancy in the paperwork.
Well, no, what it was, it was 30 feet at the time the Densmores purchased the property in 1965.
Okay.
The Planning and Zoning Commission increased that from 30 to 40 feet.
Oh, okay, that's what-
What we're asking for is a 20-foot setback from Old Stonington Road, which is a greater setback than the other properties.
Okay. So, entry into the property is from Old Stonington Road, but the, the front essentially of the, of the building is against Route 1?
Yeah, that's, yeah. Yeah, the building entrance, I mean, the, the site, where we can't enter from Route 1. It's a federal highway, and it's very difficult to get a front, get front there.
Right, right.
And it's prob, it's better because of the traffic and the curve that's there to be entering from Old Stonington Road.
But-
Safety reasons.
The front face of the building will be Route 1?
Well, the front actually to the building, yes.
Yeah. So, I mean, you'd be looking at the front from the highway there.
That's correct.
Okay. I can't think of any other questions right now.
Okay, Jeff?
I have a few questions. Can you, with the map that's up on the screen now, can you show me approximately where the, the person that doesn't want you to do this, where he's located?
Oh, not on this one. No, I can, if I go-
You can describe it. You can describe it, though. His, his, isn't he the house that's just the first house on Latimer Road?
That would be, I, I assume that's the case. I don't really have anything, I have aerial photograph-
If you were at the Dog, if you were at the Dog Watch Cafe and looking across Route 1, the relatively new house there is, I say new, maybe three or four years old, is the first house going down Latimer Road.
Yeah, I know, I know what you're talking about now. Okay, thank you. Could you-
And, and in fact, in just a point of interest on that, the land that is on the east side of Latimer Point Road, around the water there, the marshy area around the water from Route 1, the railroad tracks and around there, Mr. Gardner gave that to the Stonington Land Trust as a preserve in memory of his daughter.
Very nice. Going back to Mr. Sergeant, you didn't talk about landscaping. What are we doing to mitigate some of those issues this fellow may have along, along the Route 1 side? What are you putting in there, if anything?
Well, if you, if you can see the plan that's on the board right now, I mean, this, I've done, with the Architectural Design Review Board last night, I had a schematic site plan sort of reflecting a lot of what you see here, some additional landscape planning, and I have photographs which I can show you.
What you were indicating here on the drawing as woods are going to remain?
Oh, yeah, nothing. Let me, if I can show a photograph, I think that might help. This is the, can you see, can you see the white building to the right with?
Yeah, okay.
That is, that's the existing building. The new building is going to come to about here, but there's a 26-inch oak tree here and a 30-inch oak tree to the left and about a 14-inch cedar here. All of those remain. And basically, the area where you see this vegetation here barely encroaches upon the property, but at that, we don't have any control over that. That's in the Route 1 right-of-way.
Right.
Well, you can see there's a tree line sort of here. You know, I don't think we're going to be getting any of the roots of the trees or any of the stems where this, you know, parking is, because there's essentially parking along in here right now. So, this buffer will remain. Now, I mean, your point, and it's something, and we'll be hiring landscape architects, and, you know, based on what you've said, Mr. Densmore's concerns, we'd be very happy to provide some buffer along here. You know, realizing that we can only have one sign, so we put a sign at the entrance, and we can't put another sign as I've shown here, because zoning regs don't allow for that. You're only allowed one freestanding sign, despite the fact that you have frontage on two roads. And so, you know, we would leave this landscaping, you know, essentially untouched, and then we'll be, we'll be looking at doing some with, you know, with the assistance, more, you know, more professional understanding of how these things get done with the aid of a landscape architect along in here. This is the 26-inch oak I mentioned before, and there are a line of arborvitae's here, but the old roadway to Latimer Point, whoops, I don't know why that does that. Let me shut that down and reopen it. The old roadway essentially ran right across like this. So, there is a telephone pole here with a light on it right now. So, this, this area is beyond our control, but we have enough area here to provide some landscaping for some buffering.
Okay. And then one, one last question. Can you tell me a little bit about the facade? What are the materials on the facade? What are you doing for fenestration, et cetera?
If you bear with me a second, I can- Okay, this is a more developed elevation. What we're looking to do, this is, this would, this is just a schematic of some of the landscaping we propose. We're going to engage a landscape architect to do a better job and provide more throughout the site. This is the one in the upper right, this is the Route 1 facade, which is going to, it's all going to be clapboard siding with, you know, shingles and the gable ends, and this is the residential entrance, so we're looking to break it up. You know, it's a very long building. It would be 140 feet long if we were required to stay with a 20-foot depth, but there'd be porches in each of the residential units in the corners, and, you know, that's, that's essentially it. Would all be, it's all, you know, composition board, cement board with composition roof shingles.
Like cardboard or something like that.
Yeah, exactly. They make, they make a shingle product which provides a little better texture. So, we're just trying to break up this long facade, and we thought the little front porches with, you know, changing the material here as well in the gable ends. We have some work to do on this side. There would be a couple, you know, this is, you know, there'd be signage, hopefully visible from Route 1 at certain times of the year to give the building some identity, and then, you know, an entrance sign, as you can see over to the left here when you come in the driveway.
Thank you. You answered my questions. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jeff, I would just like to add, before we move on, it's amazing how, as many times we've all driven by there, I never paid attention to how treed that along that section of Route 1, both on the north side bordering here and on the south side of Route 1, there's a, an amazing amount of trees-
Yeah.
-that are already there. It's pretty shielded, at least in the, when there's leaves on the trees.
This is, the stake you see there just to the front of the Jeep is where the, the Christmas Shop's property line ends, and that's what, you know, when you look out to the southeast, that's what you see.
Yeah.
That's, that's a fairly dense, fairly dense foliage, which, once again, is beyond-
This time of year, it's fairly dense. So, I'm hoping to see some evergreens in there when you get done.
We're going to have this beautiful building there that people are going to be in awe. No, never mind. Sorry.
Nice try, Russ.
Okay.
I gotta try, you know?
Mark, you have any questions?
More comments and questions. First of all, I think that Mr. Sergeant did a wonderful presentation. My comment would be that that's a really very nice-looking building, and I don't think you'd want to cover it up with a whole bunch of shrubbery. I think you'd want to look at it from Route 1. That's going to, that's going to be a very nice view from that, driving down Route 1. I think this is a very good plan, and I'm very much in favor of it.
Okay, so no, no, no further questions?
No, no further questions at all.
Okay. Diana, do you have any questions?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay. I, I think, I think all my questions have been, have been answered here by your presentation, which is very good. I know one of them was that we already have a mixed-use building across the street on the north side of Old Stonington Road. You identified that building is one of these residential, commercial first-floor residential, second-floor mixed-use, which I know the town is encouraging, and that already exists there. It's, yeah, I'm, I'm hoping in the long run that something will happen to the old sale-reds property there, because that, maybe this project, if it's approved, will help spurn something with, with that area, because it'd be nice to see that redeveloped.
Mr. Chairman, if I could not interrupt one moment, please, just a matter of housekeeping.
Sure.
I have a, exhibit number three will be the pictures of the existing trees that are to be left as a buffer. Rusty, I need a copy of all of those.
Yep.
Exhibit number four is the DOT map. I have a copy of that. And exhibit number five is the map from 1959, and I've already printed out a copy of that, Joe. All right.
So, you, just to be precise, you just need the photographs of the trees?
Correct.
I'll send them right to you.
Thank you.
Excellent. This is Diana Borstman with just, you know, one last question. Is any of the housing that you're going to be putting on the second floor going to be affordable housing?
No, we went through that on the site plan for 19 Old Stonington Road, the building across the road where we got the zoning amendment to allow housing, and we went, had a number of discussions on that, and I spoke with the first selectman about that. And it is, you know, it's a very serious issue in town, and having done housing in Boston particularly where they have limits as to, to what point you have to begin to provide that, and it's usually in the 20-unit range, you know, this, it's, it's, you know, a project of this size, and when you see bigger projects come through, I think that's something you should talk to your friends on the Planning and Zoning Commission about to try to, you know, incorporate that as a requirement, as it is in many places, because in the studies we did for the zoning amendment, not for, well, for the all GC60 zone, but specifically for 19 Old Stonington Road, that is a problem in Stonington. The housing costs are high, incomes tend to be relatively high in New London County, but the issue is, and this is, you know, is everywhere, you know, there, you know, some people that work in the restaurants that want to live nearby, and with the market the way it is right now, you know, there's got to be, you know, some kind of intervention to, you know, make that, some housing affordable to those who can't afford it. Projects this size, even the 40 units across the road, really aren't of a size where a developer could, could accommodate that, but when you get into the larger numbers, it seems that it's- it seems that it's, it's becoming more and more required in numerous places where I work at this point.
Okay, thank you.
I thought of a question. Rusty, do you have, with the, at this stage, is there any potential interest or any potential identity of the type of commercial business that might use the first-floor area?
Yes.
Or is it too premature to say that?
No, right now, I think this might have been in your package. About two-thirds of the first floor will be the Densmore Oil Office. They're going to move from One Water Street across from the Chelsea Groton Bank, and this would be their new office. It's, it has some room for expansion. They don't, they don't need four offices yet, but they're preparing for that. Then there'd be another potential office, and then if they expand any further, there would be a rental office to the left in this, in this diagram. And you can see here, you know, the, the office entrances are separate from the apartment entrance, which is in the center.
Yeah.
So, that's, you know, open-plan office, the owner's office, and then a couple inside sales, and the service manager has an office.
Okay, thank you. Well, if there's no more questions, I'll ask, I think you summarized this very nicely for us. I will now ask if there's anyone present who would like to speak in favor of this application. Hearing none, I would just like to, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, I was reaching for my, so I have to comment during this part, because I can't comment later on, right?
Okay, this is Jim.
Yeah, Jim Stanton, sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
I would like to say that I really like the looks of this building. I, I like the mixed use of it. I think it fits in the neighborhood. Mr. Gardner cannot see this building from his house unless he goes into a window above his garage, I believe, because his garage faces this way, or that, the way, faces this building, and his house is focused looking out towards Watch Hill and Fisher's Island, not really get at this, at the road. It doesn't look at the highway, it doesn't look at this building. So, I think that he definitely could live with this building, and I think it adds a lot to mystic, and it's a mysticky-looking building, not a Norwich building, or one of those other buildings that we're seeing, you know, coming to town. So, I like this, and I think it should be encouraged. And also, I look at the plot plan, and I've been looking at the plot plan, and there's already, like Rusty said, there's already, the firehouse is already close to the road, and so is one of the Densmore buildings, and it's going to be in line. It's not going to be sticking out all by itself. So, I like that part, too, you know. It's not offensive as you drive up and down Old Stonington Road, which I do frequently. So, I just, I want to give a good, if I could vote on it, I would be voting positive for it. I really like this plan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Is there anyone else out there who would like to speak in favor of the application? Okay, I'm not, I'm not hearing anybody. Is there, there's no one there? Okay, I would just like to add for the, and I would just like to add for the record that the Connecticut DEP and our staff report indicated that they had no objection to the proposed variance. Okay, I will ask, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this application?
I would.
Please identify yourself.
Peter Gardner, 8 Latimer Point Road, Stonington.
Okay, Peter, the mic is yours. Keep in, Peter, I will just say that, keep in mind that the entire commission has received your letter and had a chance to read it, so maybe you could, you know, summarize what you think of the key points, but we have, we understand your detailed comments.
Okay, a little background on me. I'm a licensed land surveyor. I have a surveying engineering firm. I've presented before commissions in this area thousands of times, so I'm very familiar with both the process and statutory requirements. The 26 Old Stonington Road has been owned by Bromley's since 1994. I just wanted to get that on the record, because earlier, I don't believe that was stated. The A2 survey that the applicant says he submitted with the application, if you look at the survey that's submitted, it's not signed by the land surveyor or sealed by the land surveyor. In fact, they have a note on there that it's not valid unless it's, see the lower left-hand corner? They have a note on there that it's not valid unless it's signed and sealed. So, the application is wrong in that respect. When the state did the widening of, and created it right away from Route 1, where it is now, they just didn't take the property. They compensated the property owners for the taking. There was money to transfer hands. So, to say that this is a hardship, it's hard to stomach when there was money trading hands to allow it to be created as it was. I am not an attorney. Like I said, I'm a surveyor. Any of you that know anything about surveyors know we do get deep into the law of the land. Everything that I submitted with my, with my written statement is based in fact. Applications to the zoning regulations resulting in unusual hardship is something that you can get a variance to, but this is, this is not what that is. There's the potential for the financial advantage to the applicant. Densmore is looking to buy Bromley's property and build a building, and you just heard how he's going to move offices in there and rent the space upstairs. Potential of a financial advantage to the applicant is not a proper basis for a variance and does not constitute a hardship. Case law is cited there, and that's in the bottom paragraph of the first page. There is an existing building there, and I can look out the window right now in the room I'm sitting in and see it. So, I'll certainly be able to see any new construction that takes place there. The existing building doesn't constitute a, an excuse to tear it down. That just reinforces the fact that you don't need a variance to have something there. Any claimed hardship is self-created here. There is no hardship. This is, there's a structure there, it's been used for decades. There's no hardship. And a self-created hardship is not cause for granting a variance. As I said, I've been doing this for decades, presenting applications, presenting plans, I'm very familiar with the whole process. This, this does not constitute a legitimate variance application, and it should be and must be denied. The, I've known Rusty for a while. I gave him a call yesterday. I gave him a heads-up this was coming. I got nothing against Rusty, but he's, he's not licensed to do the survey here, he's not licensed to do the plot plan. In the plot plan, if you looked at it, there's absolutely no landscaping being proposed in the southern property line, and the woods that have been talked about are on state property. As we all know, the state can come in at any time and clear the woods out. I, I am so upset with this whole idea. This, this building is going to tower over, over Route 1, and maybe it's a pretty building, but I say again, maybe, but I can absolutely see it. I can look out the window now and see the existing buildings over there. You don't have a legitimate hardship here, and if you go to your own regulations, section 8.10, it tells you that in the zoning regulations. The, your zoning enforcement officer did give you a motion to deny, and she's correct here. Denial of variance would not prevent the applicant from reasonable use of the property, conforming with the regulations. There is a reasonable use for the property now, and it has been a reasonable use for decades. There's no excuse for granting a variance here. The fact that an owner might be able to make more proper use of land if it's out from the zoning regulations does not equate to hardship. Again, just because they can build a new building there, rent it, put middle offices in there, gain financially, that's not a reason for a variance. Now, I've gone through my notes, and I also have the highway maps from when the taking was done, and I know for a fact there was, there was compensation to the property owners for the taking. There is no good reason, there is no legitimate reasons, there's, there's no lawful reason to grant a variance. I know I'm not given the opportunity to rebut my rebuttal, but if anything comes up that wasn't stated during the original presentation by the applicant, at that time, I do have the right to comment again. So, for the moment, I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Is, hearing none, is there anyone who would like to make any general comments about this application? Okay, again, hearing none. Go back to the applicant here, since the, do you have any, you have the right to rebuttal on, on any of the negative comments made by Mr. Gardner? Rusty, go ahead, if you do, go ahead. Rusty, unmute. Unmute.
Am I on now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, we're, we're not asking for a site plan approval at this application. We're just asking to allow, to give us the opportunity to proceed with hiring a landscape architect, to hire a site engineer, to get, you know, to have, you know, a more precise survey. The previous application, I don't, I don't, don't recall you even had a survey. And so, what we're trying to do here is lay out a case for a deteriorated, underdeveloped site to allow us to let the property owner do with what their site, with what they're be allowed to do, and that is to expand it up to the allowable zoning regulations for bulk, but for the front setback, which I think we've identified as being a very difficult issue in order to conform with that. Now, one of the things, when we went to the Architectural Design Review Board last night, was they brought up the issue of landscaping, and we said quite willingly, yes, we will hire a landscape architect. We will work with Mr. Gardner to make sure that he doesn't see our new building, to the extent that it doesn't block the visibility for the commercial activity that's there. And as far as, you know, the size argument, I just don't understand. The existing building is non-conforming in terms of its parking, in terms of its access, in terms of its location, and it's a dilapidated building. Not as dilapidated as the building across the street, the former restaurant building, but it's really not. It needs to be brought up to speed. I mean, it needs to be brought up to the energy and wind codes and a number of things. If anybody goes in there and is actually trying to refurbish that building. It's a seasonal building, it's not open year-round. It's kind of a, it's a, I won't say a marginal business, because I don't know how they do. And, you know, the financial argument, I'm still unclear. I'm unclear on what the point with that is, if we're trying to just build on a piece of land to the extent that the zoning will allow us. It is a taking, it's eminent, I mean, it's still called a taking. Yes, they were compensated. The Latimer Point Company, LLC, I believe it is, or Incorporated, did receive financial compensation for the extent of the land that the Federal Highway Commission purchased from them for the highway right-of-way, and then they sold the remainder parcel, both the Christmas Shop and the Densmore site, and they were compensated for that, as they would for any other land transaction that they do. So, I'm not clear where that argument was going. So, yeah, well, at such point that we need a sealed survey and a snap set of engineering plans with a landscape plan and full drainage, we'll have all that, but all we're trying to establish tonight is that this site is a unique and awkward site to build on, and the opportunity in a commercial zone to build a building that can only be 20 feet deep. It would have to be 140 feet long, which would be one of the things that the, we presented to the Architectural Design Review Board last night, and hence their support of what we're trying to do. That would be a very awkward building, and would probably, because of its proportions, not be in keeping with the obligate, you know, the objectives of their, their board. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Gardner, do you feel that any new points were raised that you would like to address? Mr. Gardner, if you can unmute if you would answer my question, please?
Peter Gardner, I don't believe Rusty brought up anything new.
Okay, I don't think so either. Thank you. Okay. Hearing, just one last time, I think, yeah, I asked for any general comments, so, and you've sort of summarized that. So, unless somebody, unless anybody on the commission has a last question of the applicant, I'm going to close the public hearing here in a momentary.
Jeff Walker, I have a question.
Oh, go ahead, Jeff.
Actually, I think it's for Candy. So, who has, from a landscape standpoint, do we have oversight on this? Is somebody able to determine what we're going to get there?
The Planning and Zoning Commission does. They have certain sanding buffer requirements.
They do? Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we're at the point where I am going to declare this public hearing as a 20-07 clause, and we'll entertain a motion from one of our commissioners for a discussion. Do I have a motion?
This is Jim Kating. I'll make a motion to approve the application 20 tag 07 for variance from ZR 5.2.1, produce front yard setback from 40 to 20 feet up Old Stonington Road, two lots being merged to construct a mixed-use building. Reasons being mergers, the merging of the two lots would make the resulting more conforming with the GC60 zone, which they don't have now. Number two, the merging of the two lots eliminates one side-yard encroachment from the original lot there. Three, the long, narrow configuration of lot hinders development. And four, approval of the variance would not adversely affect the public health, safety, welfare, and value of the surrounding properties. That's all I have.
Thank you. Do I have a second to the motion?
Second, by Jeff Walker.
Okay, Jeff Walker, seconds. Okay. Okay. Jim, would you like to add any discussion before I go around the group?
Just that I think it's a good plan. I mean, the property is underdeveloped. I mean, we go in there all the time. Christmas tree shop is nothing to look at. I think it'd be nice to have something in there. I don't think, I mean, like we talked earlier, you know, the 20, 20 feet on Old Stonington Road versus 40, I don't think that's much of a big deal, because there's not much traffic on that road, and it matches up with the other buildings on that road, the other Densmore buildings. So I think it's a good plan.
Okay, thanks. Jeff?
I like, I like the plan as well, assuming that we're going to get proper landscaping in there and, of course, the appropriate survey, which shows the real story.
Okay. Mark?
Yes, Mark, let's go. First of all, I'd like to say that I disagree with Mr. Gardner 100% on the hardship portion of the application, because the site limitations are very obvious. And had the zoning regulations in 1966 been in effect today, he wouldn't even be talking to us. So the property was there before the current zoning. They tightened up the current zoning, I get all that. But there's an obvious hardship here. The other thing is, the building that they're proposing is very much in keeping with the Towns Master Plan, the multi-use building. So I would be very much in favor of this application.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Diana? Do you have any?
I approve of the, no, I approve of the building. I think it's going to be an improvement on what's there right now.
Okay. I would like to add my support of this. And again, I'd like to just discuss a little bit about the hardship. I also disagree with most of Mr. Gardner's arguments about hardship. One of the, two, there's two very fundamental things that when you read all of the discussions about hardship allowances, one of them is unique geometry to a particular lot, which this lot certainly has unique geometry to it. And, and two, hardship created by the regulations that are overlaid on an existing developed property, which this has. And those regulations make all of the properties on this road non-conform, all the properties on the south side in this unique-shaped lot, all non-conforming. The firehouse is non-conforming. The oil buildings are non-conforming. The Christmas tree shop was non-conforming. The Dog Watch Cafe is non-conforming. To the point Mr. Gardner tried to make, that the, you know, the, and that's what creates the hardship. If in fact, if in fact, they wanted to make a very minor modification to the Christmas tree shop, if they just wanted to, you know, make the smallest of modification, they would have to get the same variance to approve a setback that is not allowed by that regulation. So this is, you know, this is really a unique situation in that we've never had, I don't think, a neighborhood that's so consistent, so consistently made non-conforming by the existing regulations. And in fact, this proposal will put this new property and this new building in a more conforming situation than the other existing properties on the road. So it is entirely consistent with the intent of good zoning. The I think, you know, that's, that's really my argument. I think the, Mr. Gardner in his letter just seemed to really focus on hardship and really didn't address those aspects of hardship. And, and he, you know, finished off by saying that this is, this is, you know, the applicant is an attempt to enable something that would otherwise not be permitted. Well, this is exactly what the Stonington desires. This is the type of project that the Plan of Conservation and Development desires to have in this kind of area. And whenever we have the opportunity through the simple, through our zoning Board of Appeals to take a small step in that direction, I think we clearly should do it. Some of the other concerns, I think the very preliminary sketches all look good, but there certainly is a lot that will be worked out through the PZA, so I have no concern about that. So with that, I think the, you know, allowing the 20-foot setback is just absolutely the right thing to do in this case. With that, unless anyone else has, any other board member has a final comment, I'm ready to take a vote.
Bill, could I make one final comment? Mark, let's go.
Go ahead.
Only the fact that the question about variances granted and Mr. Gardner's argument about other towns, someone versus such-and-such in other towns, other years, other situations. It's my understanding that the variances are granted on a one-on-one basis and not governed by approvals or denials in other towns and other years and other situations. So that's, I would very much disagree with Mr. Gardner's argument in that respect.
Okay. Okay, any other further comments by the commission? Okay, then, let's take a vote.
Approved.
Okay, Jeff Walker.
Approved.
Mark?
Approved.
Diana?
Approved.
Okay, and I, the chairman, William Lyman, approve. So we have five in favor, zero opposed. All right, thank you all, and thank you, Rusty, for your very thorough presentation on this.
Well, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Good luck, good luck with this project. I think, I think, I think you're going to have a lot of support going forward with this and throughout the town.
Thank you again.
Okay, next item on the agenda, last item on the agenda, is review of the minutes from our 6-9 2020 meeting. Do I have a motion on that?
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second, Jeff Walker.
Second.
Good, second, Mark and Jeff, second. I just did item discussion, the minutes looked, to me, I had no comments on them, so I'm in favor of approving them. Is there any, and does anyone have any comments or discussion on the minutes?
No.
Before you, before you close the meeting, Mr. Chairman, did we vote on the CAM application?
Yeah, oh, yes, I will, that's right, I will go back to that. I'm sorry, thanks for reminding me. The, yes, everybody hang in there, because we needed to take a second vote on the, on the CAM application of the Old Stonington Road one. Let's just take this vote now on the minutes. Jim Kating?
Approve the minutes.
Jeff?
Approved.
Mark?
Approved.
Diana?
Approved.
Okay, and I also approve, vastly approve. Okay, if we could go back, and if I could have a motion to approve the coastal area management. What, Candy, can you give us some wording for what that?
It's the exact same variance. You're just reading the exact same variance request as a CAM application.
Okay, so it's just the motion to approve the CAM for?
DBA item, yes.
Okay, could I have a motion to that effect, please?
Hey, Jim Kating, I'll make a motion to that effect, just like what I said before, but this is for the CAM.
Okay.
Mark, let's go.
Okay. Any discussion on the CAM? Okay, again, we'll vote on the CAM. Jim Kating? Jeff?
Approved.
Mark?
Approved.
Diana?
Approved.
And I, William Lyman, also approve. Okay, I think we're ready to adjourn.
One point, Bill, you never brought up the new business earlier. I don't recall you bringing up new business.
We, yeah, this regular agenda doesn't have it, because it's just the public hearing. At the beginning, Candace said that she does have at least one application for new business. So at this point, there will be an August meeting, a regular meeting. And as far as we know, it will also be virtual unless something changes between now and then. And I guess, is there still time? Could there be more than one application, Candy?
No.
Okay, so it's just going to be the one application next month? Is that your question?
Yes, thanks.
Okay, a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. All right, declare this meeting adjourned. It's, I think, a good meeting. Thank you all for your participation.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Good job, Bill.